I'd like to call our March 13, 2025, Renott County School Board Budget Work Session to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. London.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnny.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Potts.
Yes, ma'am. Item 2.01, Update on Mountain View Elementary and Burlington Elementary Redistricting Plan. Ms. Tammy Newcomb.
Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to provide a brief follow-up on the public meeting held on March 11 at Mountain View Elementary regarding the rezoning of students from Burlington Elementary to Mountain View Elementary. We had approximately six families attend the meeting. Students were given a tour of Mountain View Elementary, and an overall response was positive. No complaints or concerns were shared by the attendees. Families had the opportunity to meet the administration, and I presented the rationale behind the redistricting proposition. Mrs. Close shared valuable information about Mountain View and student leaders. They did a fantastic job of touring the school, giving tours to all the families that showed up. So it was a really pleasant evening, and it was a positive. So I didn't know if you had any other questions?
Is there still plan for an action item on next week's board meeting?
Right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Well done the other night. Well done.
And she actually had her, you know, a lot of the students actually would be the ones to lead the tours.
Right, which is really nice, yeah.
Item 2.02, 2025-2026 Budget Work Session Number Four, Ms. Susan Peterson.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Well, we'll start out, you've got several documents in front of you, and I apologize, you don't have the PowerPoint in front of you, but you do have a copy of the financial budget as it will be presented next week, and we'll go through that. You have the premium sheet, which is a repeat of last year, last week, and then some information in Alex. So these are the documents you have in front of you. Just to revisit, our health insurance claims exposure, this is the chart that we've been reviewing all along. I have updated it for the claims from last week. And so you will see that the June 30 number is back to about $633,939 in the deficit. So that's just updated from last week, and as you know, I'm updating these weekly and providing them to Dr. Nicely. So this just reminds everybody that health insurance really is the big ticket. We just have some sick folks out there, and we are covering their insurance costs. Short-term strategies, I won't beligerate this, we've talked about this in the past, but we have, I did present to the Board of Supervisors a request for the transfer, and it approved under first reading. On March 21st, 25th, it will approve on the second reading, and we'll be able to go ahead and make that transfer at that time. Most of these slides are from the last meeting. I was going to just kind of touch base on them. I'm not sure how in-depth you want to go in some of this stuff to reiterate kind of what we've looked at so far. This was the current year payroll lapse, and some of the items that we are looking at needing to fund this year. Just a reminder, the bonus was part of the General Assembly budget. So when we get a final budget from the governor, we'll see if that stands. And the last language indicated that we could fully fund it using just their reserves, or we can pay local share. This would be us paying full amount to all employees with the local share. We could just split the whole thing by the FTEs, and everyone would get a smaller bonus.
How does that work? Like in terms of the bonus, just with the insurance piece, and I'm not making any suggestions, but I'm assuming the $931.503 is what it would cost to give the bonus?
That is what our portion will be if we gave the full $1,000 to every employee in the opposition right now.
So if the governor gives that okay for a bonus, does that money have to be used for a bonus?
The money has to be used for a bonus, but we do not have to match it. We do not have to use the $931. We can take the allotment to us and divide it by the number of FTEs, or...
Which because of the SOQ and all that, I mean, it ends up being not a lot, obviously.
It'll be much smaller.
It cuts it smaller. But the $931.503 would be our portion?
Mm-hmm.
So does anybody think it may be beneficial to use some of that towards, if we're going to do something like that, and I don't know if we are, we haven't voted on that, but would it be beneficial to use something like that to try to fix this health insurance problem that we're in?
Like instead?
Instead?
Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong, but you would have the option of, because typically when the state, you know, does say, hey, we're going to give X amount of money for bonuses, that's usually tied to like teacher positions. You know, the school districts typically say, okay, fine, we want to give the same thing to all employees. You don't have to do that. So why, you don't have to take the money, period. So we wouldn't have to give a bonus, we could leave it on the table. If, or we could only give it to the positions that the state is actually giving us the money for.
I don't like that idea, because then it kind of looks bad to all of our support staff and other folks. And I'm not advocating to take away a bonus from anybody. However, if, you know, the $4 million is that magic number, and that's $931,000 right there, that could go a long way with this health insurance problem. And a one-time bonus, and I, what was it that you said the bonus would be around about?
$646 net.
$646 net. So if the health insurance goes up the amount that we're looking at, it's potentially going to cost quite a few people more than that, I would think, in a year, correct?
Right, well, and correct me if I'm wrong, too. The other thing you could do is only take the amount of money they're giving us.
Yes.
And give that to everybody, but it'd be a much smaller amount.
Correct.
Can we do it that way?
We could, we could do that, or we could look at just a smaller bonus overall, so that we're giving, we're giving up maybe $200,000 or $300,000, right? We could look at multiple different options, and I can bring that back to you.
I just, I don't know what everybody else's opinion is on that, but I think the biggest problem that we're facing right now is the increase in insurance, and it's going to put a lot of people in a bad way. I don't want that, so...
And/or could we, in lieu, I guess we'd have to do the bonus, but might as well throw out the idea that we could put that in pay, so that they'd get the benefit of the VRS, which would offset the...
Well, I don't think a bonus affects VRS, though, does it?
Well, you don't, you don't get the benefit of it. That's the point, is if you put it in the payroll, they would get the benefit of VRS. But if you can't do it, maybe specify just for bonus.
It is specified just for one-time bonus.
Okay.
But I think that, I don't know how to figure that up, but that $931 potentially would go a long way in that health insurance reserve versus giving everybody a $600 bonus.
Well, then you have taxes, too, right? So you're using, you're getting a little bit more bang for your buck.
Yeah, that's, it's not a bad thought.
And this is not part of the budget adoption for next week, because this is still something that, you know, state has to come to agreement on. So I think all the things you're bringing up are things that you all have to sort them all over, you know, when the time comes.
Yeah, and I can run multiple scenarios of different options for a bonus, and see, bring that to you at the next work session.
I mean, I know that, I mean, for me personally, if I were in that situation where it's pay $200 more a month for insurance, you know, versus getting a $600 bonus, you know, I think I would rather pay less for insurance, because it's going to eat that up in a matter of two months. Your bonus is gone.
Yep. Good point.
Yeah, if you can run that, to kind of let us know, I mean, what would the number be with just what the state were to give us with all of our employees?
Sure.
Without us contributing anything?
Sure.
And then how would that affect our health insurance reserve by adding that amount in there? I don't know if you can do that.
Just a point of clarification, we can, we can put that into the health insurance reserve, but it's not going to change the premiums at this point, because once we adopt the premiums, that's what they are.
But it could shore up the reserves further, to where we're not finding ourselves...
Maybe next year, we're not having to do the same thing.
Correct.
When do the insurance rates go into effect?
July 1st.
So we couldn't amend the budget even though it's adopted? We couldn't go back to the board and say, look, we'd rather keep the insurance rates a little lower. We got this $600,000, we're going to apply it to lowering the rates?
I think the problem that we're going to run into is, Mr. Bradshaw, open enrollment begins what month?
April.
So we're going to need to know those rates for them to have the open enrollment materials ready for our employees.
Well, ideally, maybe if we got it fixed to where it needed to be, like I said, there's no raise for it next year. And then maybe even a small deduction, which is kind of unheard of, but...
We could always look at that, for sure.
Be nice if these politicians could come together, wouldn't it? Politicians. What a dirty word.
I won't beligerate, but we did go over the different long-term and short-term strategies at the last meeting to try and help us get shored up. The insurance rates that we did calculate, we added a third plan. We added a health savings account for the employees who wanted to join the Healthkeepers 3400 Plan. We did restructure the employer contributions for, across all the tiers. We reduced the family-school-couple portion. We reconfigured the wellness program to where if you participate in wellness, then you will receive your HRA or HSA contribution. Just a reminder, all of these providers do not participate in the Healthkeepers HMO. And so any employee who finds themselves going to one of these providers will want to check with them before they choose the HMO plan, which is either 1,000 or the 3400 plan. They can go there still, it's just they would pay out of network prices.
I have a question about that. So obviously, these are all local, correct?
Correct.
So what happens if somebody needs to go to, you know, they get a serious issue, and they have to go to UVA, or Duke, or Wake Forest, or something like that, and they're on this plan? I think it's important for people to understand if they choose this plan, what does that look like? Is that, because obviously, the list is going to be different then.
And if they're currently going to UVA, or Duke, or, if they're currently going to one of these physicians, and they're not on this list, then they participate in the HMO. Because our, when our consultants reached out to Anthem, they looked at every provider that is currently being used by our employees.
So that includes providers who are out of state, like out of Duke, or Charlotte, or Atlanta?
I think it did, yeah.
That would be a good point, because that was going to be my next question. What about Duke, or Wake, or...
Yeah, I mean, and obviously, we had some people get some serious illnesses at the end of last year, and I hope that doesn't happen again, but people just need to understand that if they're going to pick that HMO, you know, it could limit them. I know we've, we've kind of preached, oh, it's only going to be, you know, a 2% or 1.6% difference in your coverage, but if you wind up with something where you need to go somewhere like Duke, or, does that cover that? Now, if you're, if you are not currently going to Duke, or UVA, or any of these places, and you get diagnosed with something, and you have to go, then you're in a situation where you're going to pay out of network prices.
Possibly, yeah.
So it doesn't sound as good as it is, you know?
If you have to go to Duke, though, for...
Or it's not as good as it sounds, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if you have to go to Duke for something that's, you know, tragic, you're probably going to meet your out-of-network and your deductible pretty quick. Right? Because it doesn't take long to meet that. So I would take the better care of the better hospital all day long.
Correct.
So this slide shows all the differences between the HRA and the HSA. Just to remind everyone, the health reimbursement account is owned by Renott County Public Schools, and so any employee who currently has an HRA, and they are considering going to the HSA, it is very important for them to understand that they cannot continue to use the HRA next year if they have an HSA. They need to spend down their money earlier, or they can spend it next year, they just won't be able to receive contributions into their HSA until, the IRS laws do not allow these to run concurrently. And so that's just a big education point, since we, everybody is on an HRA right now. I don't want anyone to lose out on any of their savings up through this point.
So to Ms. Clemmons' point, if we do something like one of those videos or something, hopefully, that would be very, would be revealed, you know, so that people understood that. Right? And then I've got one question that I should have asked before now, but Ms. Hodge, and I'm sure she's shared this with you, on the HSA, high deductible plan, for some retirees, I think, I think that's what she was asking about. Did you get the letter she sent us?
She sent me some correspondence, I don't know if it's the same one that you received.
Did everybody get that, by the way?
I did.
It's the thing I was bringing to y'all's attention, that retirees don't even currently get the HRA contribution, even on the key care, and they wouldn't get it for HSA either. So, you know, whereas the rates were, and they pay, of course, the full premium, not just the employee's.
So that must be what she meant by saying that if we offer the HSA to the retirees, they may adopt the higher plan.
Right.
Higher deductible plan. Does anybody, I mean, I know this at the last minute, we don't have...
They don't, they don't receive, like, you know, even the HRA contribution, the $500 single.
Right, they don't get that now.
They don't, they don't even get that now.
But if they did, I see what she's talking about, I think. This is such complicated stuff, but I think I understand. So if we were to offer that, I'm just, I'm not saying do it, I'm just saying have that as an idea, because then you would take some groups from 1,000, 2,000, to the 3400 plan, right? Possibly. And giving them a contribution to their HSA. Do we have any idea how many retirees there are, and what that would look like potentially?
About 83.
83.
And so it'd be, if you offered, if you offered them the contribution, it'd be, you know, 83 times whichever contribution, you know, rate you're looking at.
Well, Ms. Hodge is pretty sharp, and I trust her judgment. Now, again, I'm at the 11th hour here, and just been too busy to honestly put a lot of time in to what I should have. But that sounds like it's something we should consider.
Was she asking about contributions regardless of the plan? That was my impression.
I think that's the advocacy, you know, with the premiums going up, you know, key care 1,000, or what have you, you know, would the board be interested in offsetting some of that for them with making them eligible for the contribution? That was, I think that's the question.
I would if they were considering the 3400 plan, or whatever.
Can you do that, though? Can you offer it on one and not on...
I don't know the answer to that.
Sure.
I feel certain you could.
You can. The HSA gets tricky, because there are specific rules. Now, granted, retirees come off of our health insurance when they turn 65, right? But there are very specific rules with the HSA regarding, like, six months before you turn 65, and not being able to contribute to it, and so we would want to make sure we ironed out these intricacies, but...
And if there's only 83, there may not be 10 or 15 that would do it. But if you're taking them from the lower plan to the upper plan, it looks like a win-win. I wish we had time to have Ms. Hodge here to go over that, but nonetheless, it's a thought that I think's got some validity to it.
Now, do we, are we offering both? I mean, if, is that an option? Like, you can either be on the HRA, or the HSA is your decision, or are we having to pick one?
So the HRA will be coupled with the 1,000 plan and the 2,000 plan.
Okay.
The HSA is coupled with the 3400 plan.
That makes sense, because with the higher deductible, you're able to take out the money, tax benefits.
And the HSA is required to be with the higher deductible, because the HSA IRS rules actually drive that deductible level.
So it was 3400, you're getting 2,400. Is it single, what's the single for the 3400? Is it 3400 for a single, or 3400 for the family?
3,400 for the single, and 6,800 for the family.
Wow. That puts a hurtin' on people.
No, I get it, but if you don't go to the doctor, or you don't have issues, and that 1,200 goes in your account, and it stays with you, and it's a tax-deferred, I mean, that on top of the $1,200, I don't know what that is, $1,500 at the end of the day, but it's still, and for younger folks that don't go to the doctor, you know, it's a great, now, again, and you get the chance to change this every year, it's not like you're stuck with it your life. But I think people would like this, and they don't have to pay for their insurance. Isn't that the, isn't that what we put in for the employee? They don't have to pay if they take the $3,400 plan. So if I'm healthy and don't go to the doctor, and of course, I am the picture of health, guys. I don't know if y'all noticed that.
We don't recommend that for you, but...
It's right, I need to do the $1 plan.
Stay away from the Happy Meal.
But anyway, I mean, it's a good, good option for some of the younger, healthier folks. And again, if they want to use the, as a tax savings, and year after year, it adds up, it's a, it's a good option, I think. I use it in my business.
You were asking about the deductible, and these are the, so that we presented the last meeting, two options, and the only difference between the two was the 2,000 plan either being an HMO or a PPO. And so this is option A, with it being a PPO, and what the rates would be. So this is option B, with it being the HMO, and then what the premiums would be.
What's the premium difference between the HMO 2,000 and the PPO 2,000?
It's on the sheet.
If not everybody, if watching's going to have this in front of them. Because I've had some people ask me questions about that.
For which level?
For the 2,000, if it's the HMO versus the PPO for 2,000?
So the employee PPO would, if they were single, it'd be $1,1350, and it'd be $9314 if it was an HMO.
And what's the family?
It is 876, 87576.
For PPO?
An 8, correct, an 82486.
About $50.
About a $50 difference.
So then I did go through and changed a couple of numbers on this slide, and they're corrected on your sheet as well, so it will be slightly different. Dr. Nicely found a couple of items that we could add to the transfer, and so the transfer went up slightly in both cases. And then we took the computer software for Alex off from the program. And I will, let me hop off this real quick. We, and Dr. Nicely, do you want to go through this?
Of course, we discussed this last week, you know, about the Virtual Benefits Counselor Program, and you all asked, you know, we survey the employees just about, you know, what kind of value they found in it and so forth. So this, of course, was a program that people could put in their personal information, their prescriptions and all that, and help them determine which plan choice would be the best option. And, you know, somebody pointed out that, of course, last year was a choice between two options, which are very similar, you know, two different deductible levels. But, you know, obviously, this was a, you know, fairly expensive program, and, you know, it was over $37,000. So given that significant cost, you all asked, you know, can we do a, do a survey? And so we, you know, put that out the next day.
And so we, you know, put that out the next day, which was last Friday, and ran that through Wednesday. Mr. Bradshaw, I know they sent out daily reminders to everybody to please do it. And so the results uh, you have here, so we have seven hundred and sixty total responses. Um, and if they, if they said, hey, I'm not even on your insurance, they clicked, you know, no, but then the survey ended. So it kept the data clean, but uh, so six hundred and sixty-three people were actually on our health insurance. And of those, uh, twenty-one percent said they had used it last year. If they didn't use it, we kinda wanted to know why. One, were you aware of it but just decided not to use it? About thirty-eight percent said that was their situation, and then forty-one percent said, hey, they weren't aware of it. So uh, all of that was interesting too, so about, only about twenty-one percent, you know, actually used it, which about a hundred and forty-one employees of those who responded, you know, in all fairness there. And then if they said they didn't use it, the survey ended. If they said they did, we wanted to know about their experience. And so we asked, you know, how easy was it to use, and you saw the results there, you know, most people seemed to think it was, you know, fairly easy to use in terms of uh, you know, how clear the information was, you know, that was pretty favorable. Um, in terms of how helpful was it making your decision, that was kinda split pretty evenly. So, you know, about, about half or, you know, about fifty um, one percent said, yeah, it was helpful. Um, and then about uh, thirty uh, seven percent, am I doing my math right? Forty-one percent, excuse me, forty-one percent said it was helpful, and about thirty-seven percent said, you know, not so much. So they were, you know, fairly evenly split as far as the helpfulness goes. Um, in terms of what make, what sense to make of that and so forth, I think I have a last slide, just some, some observations we made. You know, obviously the usage was, you know, relatively low last year. Um, and I think it was worthy to note that, you know, there are a lot of folks, forty-one percent of those who responded said, I didn't know about it. And, you know, that, that could have been like their level of concern wasn't real high because of, you know, um, just two options that were there. Again, you can make sense of it how you want, but uh, the, you know, they're pretty evenly split, like I said, about how helpful it was. Um, I mean, obviously the concern is still there. It's still, you know, I would consider it a fairly expensive program, over thirty-seven thousand dollars. So in terms of your bang for a buck, I think it's, you know, definitely up for, you know, to, to, important to question that. So uh, you know, a, a, a couple of points, certainly our, our staff is here to answer questions uh, for anybody who wants uh, information. You are gonna do that informational video and ask principal to show that at faculty meetings, make sure by seeing the information, to explain the new plans. So in terms of explaining, you know, that one-way kinda communication, we're gonna do everything that we, you know, can to on that front. Uh, certainly staff's available to answer questions about the plans, um, you know, uh, so that's that, just to make that clear. Um, and at the end of the day, it's, you know, to, to employees, obviously, it's kinda do their homework, um, understand their own situation, um, understand what the different plan options are, and then, you know, make their best choices, um, you know, for their, for individual circumstances. But um, um, given the cost of the program and, you know, unless the board feels otherwise, we felt like, you know, this is something we might want to pull back on as far as, you know, um, uh, that, that outlay of money, you know, given the, based on the survey results that we saw, the, the low usage and, and so forth.
I definitely would agree with that.
Yeah, I agree. It was a very lukewarm response, right? It was very, as my kids would say, mid.
Yeah, that's why I go the level of concern, like if you're, if there was a higher level of concern, you'd think the, the, the results would be a little more compelling, but.
There was, wasn't compelling at all.
As far as the video goes, was that, will that be something that they could go back and access again later?
Sure, sure. We didn't want to, not just make it passive, but actually ask principals to show it at our staff meetings.
Right, I think we should, but then it's a lot to take in probably.
Absolutely.
So that if people could go back and pull it up again on their own.
Right, we would email it out, we'd put it on the website and all that.
Get digested.
So going back on these options, are, are you finished with that, Susan, or are you still gonna?
Um, well, I, what I can do is go.
I, I just have a question, I mean, it's more.
I do have this up there if you want me to pull this up.
This is kinda more for our, everybody here in the room really, cause it affects everybody. I mean, is option A, the only difference between option A and B is, is simply the key care two thousand versus the H M O two thousand. And there's about a fifty dollar difference. So we currently had, do you know how many people we currently have on the two thousand P P O? Is there any way to get that info?
There were forty, forty percent switched over to the P P, to the two thousand P P O.
So my fear is, I guess, is that gonna disrupt a lot of people going from a P P O to an H M O for that two thousand? Because a lot of them may not be able to afford to keep a P P O if they need it going back down to a thousand. You get what I'm saying? So that forty percent probably went to the two thousand for the cheaper monthly rates. But maybe the, some of those do need a P P O versus the H M O or would prefer it. So is it worth fifty?
The disruption report was pretty, I mean, it was minimal.
But my fear is, is what we were talking about earlier, not so much the, the local thing is, I mean, let's face it, I mean, we all have insurance and hope we never have to use it, but unfortunately with health insurance, it's not, it's not the case. Um, you know, it's just a matter of when you're gonna have to use it. So I guess my fear is, and the one person that called and, and kinda was talking to me about it was concerned because they wanted to keep the, the P P O, but yet they couldn't afford to do the thousand dollar P P O, taking that reduction. So I'm just saying, is it worth fifty bucks to force everybody on the two thousand into a two thousand H M O versus option A?
Fifty bucks times how many people?
Well, you're talking about, he's talking about their individual premium, right? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Right, the individual premium for, for.
He's saying he's, they're saving fifty dollars.
Or how many is it?
Well, for families, it's fifty dollars.
Right.
So you're talking about six hundred a year, right?
Right, but I'm saying how many people?
Well, forty percent are on that two thousand plan. I don't know how many of that forty percent would care to stay on that plan, or would they rather go to an H M O and, but you wouldn't have an option at that point. And if you did wanna P P O the two thousand, cause you can't afford to do the one thousand, which there are probably employees in that forty percent that financially may not be able to take on another two hundred because.
Well, here's what I, I would think, and this is gonna get a little more complicated yet, because we gotta figure out about the self-insurance piece of keeping that funded. But why couldn't you offer a P P O in both of them and a H M O in both of them?
I think because it, it's hard for you to determine.
My fear with that, yeah, my fear with that is, um, I mean, it's already a bit of a guesswork in terms of trying to figure out where people are gonna migrate to and land. And, you know, that number makes, as you know, makes a huge difference in terms of the solvency of the, you know, the reserves and everything else, cause if you guess wrong, you know, to a large extent, I think it's gonna affect the overall health of the reserves. So you wanna try to get that as close as you can, and I think the more options, I mean, and we all love options, but I think the more that is, it makes it nearly impossible to have any guesswork in terms of really how to set the rates accurately. You know, to, to put all that into play, I, that, that's kinda how I see it, it's just.
And can you have a much diff, enough differentiation between four plans? How are you gonna make that differentiated?
Yeah, I think it makes become, makes almost impossible to guess.
It's all gonna look very similar. I don't know how you make enough differentiation between the, the premiums on those if you have four options.
Right, it's the key.
I just, I worry about that because I feel like option A, everybody's gonna be able to stay where they're at if they want to, the rates are what they are.
But then we're not offering anything different. We're not, we're not offering something.
We'd be offering the thirty-four hundred.
Right, but we're not offering the H M O, which is what we were trying to do, was to bring down the.
Well, we'd offer the H M O at the three, thirty-four hundred rate. So you would have the P P O one thousand, P P O two thousand, and then the thirty-four hundred H M O. So somebody like Tim's talking about that's younger or may very well help, in good health, or may not, you know, mind taking some of that risk. They would have that opportunity with the thirty-four hundred. The forty percent that are currently on the P P O would still be able to be on the P P O. And then the other folks who wanna pay a little extra to be on the thousand would be able to do that. I think it would, it has a lesser chance of upsetting a lot of people if we've got forty percent currently on the P P O.
I'll be honest with you, we could do, we could do both at the thousand, both at the two thousand, and whatever at the thirty-four hundred. We could do that.
She's saying five, five different options?
Yep. I am. And I'm thinking if you wanna stay on the P P O, you know, you're gonna pay the premium. If you wanna go to the H M O and save on the rates, there you go. You, you pay a less premium and, but I mean, we could do that now. Is it, you know, nothing's, nothing's easy, but this is complicated. I don't know what our counterparts around the, the other counties, but we could offer five plans. I don't see that being a huge.
It would be four, four plans.
What's that?
It would be four plans, right? So.
Four plus the.
Are you suggesting do either?
He's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, the other, I mean, just you asked about our neighbors, I mean, um, everybody offers generally two or three plans.
I think we have one neighbor that does more than that, Franklin County maybe.
Franklin County.
Are any of them self-insured?
Fuck here, fuck here might do four.
Um, all of our neighbors are self-insured.
All of them, okay.
That's my only concern, is forty percent are on that plan currently, and then you're gonna force them to either take an H M O that they may not want or possibly not be able to afford the, the thousand dollar P P O rates, cause that goes up another two hundred dollars a month.
Don't we still come back to the disruption rate being pretty small?
I just worry about the, the people who may, you know, have to go out of town.
You'd probably have to ask our consultant, um, what those numbers would look like for those people. Like, what's the percentage of that happening in her view, people who have gone to the H M O, haven't been happy with it because of catastrophic things? Again, like, I do think that if you do have something catastrophic, you're gonna meet your deductible real quick, real quick.
If you were concerned about the plan, you'd be here as the consultant to make sure there weren't any questions, but.
Can we be sure about, did they check on that ev- every doctor that was in that disruption? Can we check on that just to make sure that anybody that they were using, whether they were out of state or not, was included in that?
I would have checked, but I do think that they got, just got a list of all the providers.
Okay.
Because they would have at least gone through all the retirees that are out of state.
Right.
Right? Um, I will say, if we, we can certainly look into anything that you want us to look into. Um, it will get tricky if we try to offer five plans because we have to make assumptions of who's going to go where. And already we're making assumptions of how many people will go to the thirty-four hundred, um.
Do we, do we know how many, do we know how many people are on the one thousand for the P P O?
Um, I mean, I had all that information in the, I don't have it at my fingertips.
You, you had quite a few that migrated last year. I felt like it was like forty percent migrating.
Forty percent moved over to, we planned on twenty percent and forty percent.
Forty percent moved over.
So everybody else is currently on the one thousand.
So I almost wonder if you, you're saying sixty percent are on the one thousand?
Right, cause.
Yes, it's sixty-fourty.
This, this is the first year we even had anything about the one thousand.
And Ms. Hodge, let me, to your point, Mr. Hudson, Ms. Hodge said that if you get over a certain percentage, typically you would do away with that plan. So if you, so we're at forty percent, if we do this again this year, maybe we get to sixty or seventy percent. And uh, but at some point, you do away with that, so I don't know if that's an option too, but anyway.
I mean, I would be fine with four, but I understand what you're saying that, you know, I think the H M O at a thousand would be less beneficial than having the H M O at two thousand and just offering both two thousand. But obviously sixty percent of people are on that thousand, and I don't wanna upset sixty percent of the people either.
Well, they would probably stay on the thousand, right? The sixty?
I would assume, I mean, so you have sixteen.
Actually, some of them might move over to the, to the H, the high def, high def, oh my gosh, high deductible. Um, H S A, if they're healthy.
Could I throw an idea out? Could we? I mean, I don't want to do this if nobody wants to do it. Could we ask a couple thoughts from a couple people in the room? Would that be okay?
If you're fine with me, that's, that mean, we're, it's you guys that it's affecting.
Shall we?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
You okay with that? Jim, what, what was your? So let me put you on the spot.
I'm gonna have to manage all these plans, and I'm getting texts right now from, trying to figure out how they're gonna handle three plans, let them know five plans.
Right.
But we'll do it. I mean, whatever's needed, we'll do it. Um, we have, I think about fifteen hundred employees on our insurance, so if you take forty percent, we're gonna get six hundred on the two thousand plan right now, and the others on the one thousand. I do see some of those moving over to the thirty-four hundred plan, uh, which of course affects our rates and things like that. I am concerned by going to a lot of these extra plans, but again, if it's what's best for our employees, my team will make it work. Uh, we really will, and I'm not concerned about the education piece, remember, like you were talking about, cause we're gonna, Dr. Nicely said, create that video, we're gonna send it out to them, we're gonna make it available to them in their individual emails, as well as the principals. So we'll do everything we can to make sure that they understand, as long as they're willing to read or to pay attention to what we're providing, so.
Well, what I guess I'm looking for in the room is, uh, to Mr. Hudson's point. Well, I mean, what do you, what do you guys think, in lady, guys, ladies? Um, what do you think our staff here?
It would be nice to have staff, I mean, we have directors and, and no offense to anybody here, you deserve your positions, but everybody here makes quite a bit more than, than our teachers and our.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm trying to find something, but I don't, I, I get what you're saying.
I'll answer one other thing. The zero, the premium per month is gonna be the best thing that's gonna happen to me as far as trying to hire people coming in. Cause we're trying to compete with the, you know, a lot of our kids coming out, I call them kids, sorry, coming out of college. And we have divisions around us that do offer that, and so for me to be able to offer that as well is gonna be huge, attracting some of those. Cause again, they're younger.
Absolutely, if I were graduating, I'd say, heck, give me the zero, I'll take the twelve hun, I'll take the twelve hundred.
That's the most important thing as far as I think it's attracting new young candidates. And to your point, you're right, we do have a lot of support people that, that do struggle, especially if they're trying to put the entire family on, on, on a nutrition or I A, and we have some of those that work strictly just for insurance. But they choose to do that because of what their family situations are, so you don't ever wanna second guess them. But uh, of course, anytime we can help, we can. Did I answer a question?
I don't think anybody can answer that, but I think you did a great job.
Okay.
Um, I just, I, to Mr. Hudson, he's right, I mean, we don't, if we had teachers in here, if we, you know, I don't know how far you can take it, I, I just wanna think of everybody, we wanna make this right for everybody. Um, and it's just, it's just hard, but what I think we've gotta be cognizant of is whatever these plans go up, we gotta find a way, and I'm telling you, I'm preaching this seventeen million dollars. I'm preaching it, that we need to ask for that money that we are due in the revenue sharing agreement. Because we need it, especially in this year where insurance rates are probably gonna hit hard, right? Um, for a lot of folks, and uh, we need to continue to compete. I love the, the thirty-four hundred and the H S A plan. But, you know, it's, uh, when I did this in private business, it wasn't the C E Os and the directors, just like Mr. Hudson said. Um, but it was the minimum wage. It was those folks that you worried about because they had to provide insurance for their families. And so it, it is a tough, tough thing, and uh, I don't know what the right answer is, but.
I do like that healthkeepers is lower, uh, the H M O, and that gives people a lot of options. I understand what Brent is saying, I just would wonder what the consultant would say at this point in terms of if a person had to go, how often do they see that, and having to travel out of the state, how much that would affect somebody?
I mean, further looking at it, I like option A, but I mean, honestly.
Option B in the long run, it's gonna probably see a lot more people, more money.
Fifty dollars a month.
That's a lot.
I think we, I think we look at the option B and come with as much money as we can to help these people for salaries.
If we had, I mean, we projected twenty percent migration last year and ended up with forty, if it had been twenty, we'd have more in our health insurance reserves now, correct? Yeah. I can see, I mean, the difficulty in, in us projecting with three plans is gonna be difficult. I can only imagine if we were to go to four or five plans and we miscalculate, how many are gonna migrate to each plan, it's gonna be almost impossible for us to have those health insurance reserves where we need them to be.
Well, that's part of what we're, why we're here this year.
Right, that's a really good point, David.
I mean, I think that's what Dr. Nicely was saying, is that it's gonna make it really difficult for us to figure out what's going in the reserves if we can't predict who's falling into three plans, much less five. So that is the difficulty.
I agree, and I think that we, we're obviously gonna have to start preparing for this in the future. I mean, I know we got hit, you know, it was an unusual thing, but we're definitely gonna have to make sure we pad that account more.
I, I will say, I did talk to somebody about this, and she did verify what the consultant said, is it's very cyclical. It's just up and down, up and down, that, you know, one, you, you have five years of a great year and then just a whammy. And then it'll be, you know, it's, it's, and her, what she said to me is, people are people, and you can't predict people all the time.
I'm almost looking at it, I'm almost looking at it like a capital maintenance type thing, I mean, you need to constantly be funding and preparing. I mean, we've put, you know, you put something in a turf field, for example, you're gonna start putting money back to replace that in ten years. We need to start, you know, I know it's hard to project, but we need to start putting more back to prevent these things from happening in the future.
I am happy we gave the teachers the raises though, with that, cause we did have, we had a lot of money sitting in that account.
When, to Mr. Greenway's point, it does help everyone in the long run because your V R S retirement's based off your highest pay.
And we had what we were asked to keep in that account, and you just don't know when these claims are gonna hit like this. So I guess we, you know, if we wanna stick with three, I think that's fine.
But which, which option do we go with, is the thing? I mean, if we had A, you're giving people the opportunity to take that cheaper plan, or if we go to B, you're, you're kinda cutting out the forty percent.
I mean, if we had A, you're giving people the opportunity to take that cheaper plan, or if we go to B, you're kind of cutting out the 40%.
Not necessarily. They could still stay on the 2,000. It just means that they're going to be the healthkeepers.
HMO.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. I mean, I think once we determined that the disruption rate was so low, I feel like that was kind of our answer. For me, it was anyways.
I just worry about people with a catastrophic situation. Again...
But again, if they, if they were on those, and we can make sure that we're right about that, in terms of what doctors they had already seen.
Well, that's going to be local, I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding.
No, she's saying if they had already seen them.
But no, I'm talking about people that are already, the 40% that are already on it may not have any health conditions, and then something happens, then they get put in that situation, but I understand what you're saying. I mean, I'll go along with whatever you guys want to go with, I'm just pointing out.
Well, here's the key, again, I say, if we go with option B, and I agree with Shelley on this, even though I know, and I feel for exactly what you're saying, Mr. Hudson.
I mean, I was just one of those people, and that's why I'm very passionate about it.
But I think we...
Unfortunately, to put in that situation.
I think we've got to make sure that we come at this, that's why that's 17 million, that we're not getting our revenue sharing fees, that we, we asked for that. We've never asked for it. We didn't even, you know, it's kind of like a church committee, I've said, you know, we roll off and nobody, it takes you eight or 10 years to realize, oh, wait a minute, where's that extra piece of revenue go? So now we're asking, or we're going to ask, I hope. And we just need to make sure we make up the salary to our staff to cover this, and they get the benefit of the VHR, or the VR, VHR, VRS, I think it's VHSL, but VRS. And it's going to be important to us, you know, to do that. Let me, to that point, real quick. So if we're looking at, we're looking at the base budget, right? Isn't that...
Oh, we're going to get into that next?
I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
The governor's, the governor's budget's the one that we're recommending.
All right, we're going to go with the governor's budget, so my, my only reason for bringing that back is, we're looking at, if we go conference or base, we're looking at the possibility of $800,000 reduction for the base, right? We're looking at upwards of $3 million if we were fortunate enough to get the conference, right? And this is a biennium year, right? So, you know, the possibility, if we don't get any of that 17 million that we're supposed to get, is that we can, we would be getting some, some more revenue, hopefully, you know, we, again, this is a hope, and I know what that means. You never do that in business, but, you know, there's $3 million that would be coming to us that we could, I'm sure we've got other things we want to do, but, you know, our staff is the top.
Right. If we, if we, if we do get the conference budget, which is the general assembly budget, then the proposal would be to come back around, get the increase up to 3.1% versus just the 1.6% step. So definitely make that a priority.
Yes.
And be able to put a little more into health reserves as well. Those would be the two top priorities.
Right. So I just want to throw that out there again. I mean, nobody can say with certainty, obviously, but that, you know, there are some pieces out there that we have available that hopefully will come to fruition.
I personally think option B is probably the best route to go, just from a budgeting standpoint and moving forward with that. I know there are going to be individuals that probably would prefer option A, but I think the majority, for, for our sake, option B makes the most sense.
Well, I definitely think going to five plans is, is going to be too complicated in terms of trying to determine what we're going to do in terms of our reserves. I think we have to, it has to be option A or B. I don't think we can expand.
Yeah, just to be clear for anybody listening, it's not a matter of being complicated and causing more work. It's not at all. It's just our ability to forecast accurately and budget well, and it would be greatly diminished, I think.
Right.
So I guess we'll get into the budget book now?
Thanks for all that clarification.
I will say, the numbers in the budget book were based off of if y'all choose option B. So if you do not choose option B and want it changed before next week, I need to know, because I'll need to change all the numbers that are in this book. Because I had to start somewhere, so just FYI. So if you want to turn to your book, and we'll start with page three, and we'll start kind of going through what the budget is going to look like. The first several pages are the annual changes and requests. As was explained earlier, we are showing a base budget in the first column. This is if the governor adopts the stay-put budget and just does not adopt anything that he, he put forth or anyone else put forth, if they come to a complete stalemate. Worst-case scenario, we're really hoping that is not, not going to happen. So that was the reduction in the state revenue. We also threw, reduced the county money by about half a million in case they came back and did something with the taxes to reduce our, our share of the revenue sharing agreement. So this is just our worst-case scenario. We are looking to adopt a budget for the governor's budget, which is the middle column. And then the conference budget is what is being looked at right now by the governor. So the revenues are the first section that we're looking at. They are the same as what we have presented all along. Then we'll just go through the departments one by one. On the administration department, we did, for the governor's budget, remove the athletic allotments of the $50,000 and leave that in for the conference budget, so that if we get the additional money from the conference budget, we will add it in. Otherwise, that's some of the additional money that we put back into the health insurance reserves. And then the middle school assistant coaches, if we end up reducing, getting the worst base, we could, we, that is an item we could carve down. Nothing changed in the instruction budget. Under finance, you'll see the health insurance reserves changed a little bit. We are using this number currently, and then if we get a reduction or an increase, that's how much of the one-time money that we will put into the health insurance fund. Going down to HR, what you'll see the difference is, so if we are lucky enough to get the conference budget, we will not need the $750 for the one-step. That's already built into the 2.8 million on the next line, so that's why these numbers are a little bit different. And then everything else stays the same there. We did, if we have to cut a little more, we, we pulled the paid time off, wrote expenditures down about $100,000. If we had to cut more, we put the transportation assistant route manager, pulled that off the list if we had to reduce. The secondary school counselor came off, and that will be an add-back if we can get to the conference budget. Moving on to page six. So then you can see what the total general fund expenditure changes would be under the baseline, under the governor's budget or the conference budget. We did have one additional request since we last met, and that was to fund one middle school math specialist. And instruction is going to run that through the Algebra Readiness State Grant that we get annually, and reduce some of the tutoring that is sitting in that, that account right now. And then the other two items were just not funded through the budget. So if you move to page seven, this is kind of the, the 10,000 view of our budget. Funds are going down on the left-hand side. And then the functions go across the top. Just to remind you, the functions are how the county adopts our budget, and so they would be interested in what these numbers are. But we operate based off of fund, and so we're really interested in them going down on the right-hand column. So we'll just kind of flip through, I will not beleaguer every single one of these pages, but I do want you to be aware that these are each of the funds individually. Page eight is our, our general fund, and you can see the increase of the 4.4 million in revenues with the increase in the expenditures. And we're putting the stuff where we said we were going to put it. Continuing page 10, 11, these are all detailed general fund revenues. So you can flip through those at your leisure. Moving to page 13, you're getting into the department level for general fund expenditures. So the increase/decrease should agree with your changes on the first couple of pages for each of the departments. That goes through page 17. Moving to page 18, so it's been a couple of months, but the first work session, we brought the fleet replacement fund to your attention. This is showing that we are reducing the fleet fund by 2.7 million in the transfer and in the expenditures. We did increase the 46,000 to add car seats. So the page 18 is the actual fund itself, page 19 is the fleet replacement plan itself. The first column, I will remind everyone, is what turns into the budget, and so this column, if we go back a page, ends up being the column here. So that's 18 and 19. So then moving to 20 and 21, this is the instructional resources fund. So you'll see that came down by 513,000. And it'll agree to the, the column here, and you can see which subjects were being adopted and when. Moving on to page 22, so I think 23 and 24, we've got the tech replacement fund. So this is going up 247,000 and 79,000 in expenditures. Again, this column is going to agree to the column over here. And this is the tech replacement plan that we won over previously.
This is probably the biggest thing. Jeff, I remember when we started building this. I mean, it's not that far back to where we started adding computers. It's pretty cool. Now we have a whole budget.
Grant fund is next, and so you've got the total revenues and expenditures, then the revenues by grant source. I've got that for several pages, and then page 30, I think, is a really good one for you to look at, because that's, I, I provide this just for information, because it actually describes the program or the grant itself, so you can read through if you're newer to some of these programs. So these are all the programs that we are looking at. And I will just take a quick moment to say, you know, at the federal level, there is a lot going on. There's a lot going on with the Department of Ed on the federal level. I've heard a lot of things about some of our title grants. Everything that I'm hearing indicates that the IDEA grants will be held whole. There is some understanding that numbers on the Title I, II, and III grants are being used for political purposes, and so I don't think these ones are going to go away. They may be carved down some for us, though, in the future. But we have no idea what that's going to look like. I feel comfortable that all of our executive, executive directors and directors have taken a look at their grants and have considered, you know, they don't, some of them don't even have people in them, so if it's just materials, that's kind of an easy, we just don't buy the materials, right? And so I think they're, they're being very strategic with what they're seeing going forward. So then we move into the nutrition services fund. And you can see we have 559,000 more in revenues, and we're, have 182,000 less in expenditures. We do, are using 294,000 of her carryover. Several years ago, we had a very large carryover. They were required to keep three months of expenditures in their carryover balance. But she's done a tremendous job replacing equipment and getting our kitchens in a better position, and so she has really spent a lot of that. So she has a lot going on at the federal level with her programs as well. So she is taking a forward-thinking consideration of what does she need to do in, in her fund to ensure that she's not relying in these carryovers. So she's, she's carving that down a little bit as well. And so then we have it by school for a couple pages. She has her equipment replacement plan in here. Student activity funds, not a lot of, a couple of just line item changes, but no big bottom line change for them. And then capital projects fund, so the fir, this is, the first page agrees to the CIP, and then the second page agrees to everything else. So if you go to page 44, that first column of the CIP, and you go back to page 42, is going to agree with this 2026 page. And you'll see we've started adding Northside Middle Renovation Project on here. To start squirreling away some cash for that project going forward. We do have, you'll see the Northside High Turf. We've got 50,000 going into that. We are contributing 25, and the county has given us 25 as well. So we now have account holders set up for all of our, our turf fields for replacements. And then the capital maintenance plan feeds into, so this 1 million in the capital maintenance plan feeds into this bottom line of the CIP.
And if I heard correctly, in your meeting, when you went to the county, they want to know these numbers too, don't they? They, I have, you had one of the board members ask you if this was part of it.
I think so. So then moving into the health insurance fund, as I mentioned, the numbers that are in the 2026 column are based on us adopting the Plan B. We can certainly change that to any plan that you want. I would just need to change these numbers. They'll change slightly. And then the premiums are behind that. And you'll see, we've got the monthly premiums for all the different contract levels. And then the dental insurance, just a little true-up there. So that was basically made whole. Their premiums did not change, so their rates are in there as well. Risk management, we level-funded that. This is basically the fund that, that covers workers' compensation. And then the OPEB trust, we're sitting at 1.9 million in beginning net position, and if you recall, we had an actuarial come in and provide us guidance in best funding measures for the OPEB. We will not provide the contribution this year or next year, but in FY '27, we would like to plan on a significant contribution into the OPEB. We will do that for a couple of years, then we will be kind of good to go, and we will reach a 75% funding level in this plan. And I think that will be a good plan provided to us from the actuary to keep us at a level where the, the bonding agencies will be comfortable with our fiscal responsibilities. So really, that's it. That's the whole budget, kind of in a nutshell. I went through that super fast, because I figured you really didn't want to beleaguer all the details.
What migration factor did you use for the health insurance?
35% moving into the HSA. We were aggressive, because it's free to employees. And we, we thought, you know, Mr. Bradshaw has been asking for a free plan for many, many years, and so, based on his conversations recruiting folks, we just thought that after experiencing such a larger migration into the 2,000... after experiencing such a larger migration into the two thousand planned, we thought we would have a lot of success getting folks owned to the HSA and the thirty-four hundred plan.
And did you say thirty-five percent or was it twenty-five percent?
Maybe it's twenty-five percent.
Thirty-five, okay, that's one, that's probably me. Thank you.
I, I'll double-check that and send that back to you.
And the breakdown between the three plans?
Um, I will provide that as well.
Madam Chair, if I can make a couple of points, 'cause I think it's helpful to say these kinda things out loud. I think I've expressed this to board members, but, um, you know, first of all, um, you know, this is a difficult process, obviously, budget time every year's, uh, difficult because you always have more needs at once than you have resources. But, um, I mean, you know, you all put a lot of thought into that because you care so much. Um, you know, I just wanna commend Ms. Peterson for all of her hard work and doing all this, but also all of our, uh, departmental leadership. Um, I know you all are aware, but just to point out, 'cause every time you see departmental savings listed here, I mean, collectively, uh, you know, all the directors in, in the room worked with us to carve out about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in reducing their budgets for next year. And, uh, I tell that's a significant amount of money. And, um, uh, you know, we were reduced by nineteen positions. Um, you know, and I think that's just, you know, trying to be as lean as we can, uh, still being effective. And I'm also very proud to say, you know, we've, we've reached out to some, uh, well, about six or seven different divisions across Virginia that are about our size. In fact, one of them came down here, we had a face-to-face meeting to, just to kinda compare apples to apples, and, 'cause they were interested to, to know, you know, what is the footprint of like our central office staff, for example, in that level of leadership? And, um, uh, we found that, um, the other folks that we've reached out to were all very comparable. And by comparison, I mean, we, we, we run about thirty to forty positions fewer than what, uh, divisions of comparable size do at the central office level. So, I, I just think it's important to say that out loud, and, um, just really proud of all the work that, um, that these guys do, because I think we get a lot of bang for our buck. Um, you know, uh, so, uh, just appreciate everybody working together to try to make all this work.
And those nineteen positions, was it about a million in savings?
Uh, about nine hundred thousand, right, but close to it, yes, sir.
Does anyone have anything else?
Nope.
No, other than to reiterate what Dr. Nicely said, I know we have asked and asked for this, and then asked for that, and then asked for this, and then something different. And, well, I do appreciate all the, uh, the work, Susan, not only you and your staff, but everybody's done to, to get us to where we are, so, well done.
Been a challenging year.
Yes.
But you know what, we could be in a lot worse shape, like some of the stories we hear around the valley. So, thankful we're in a good spot.
So, the plan would be, um, you know, so next week, uh, Ms. Peterson, this would be an action item, um, obviously on the regular board meetings, should be bring, bring back and, uh, you know, for the good of the public, uh, do a summary version of the, you know, with the adopt, the budget you would adopt. So we are, we are recommending that, uh, for now, we adopt the, the governor's budget as, as Ms. Peterson presented, and, and with all the corresponding expenditures and revenues. Uh, but also, again, you all know this, but just for the good of anybody listening, uh, it, it's, it's almost assuredly gonna happen, that we're gonna have to circle back around come April or May to adopt a revised budget, uh, based on these unknowns when it comes to the, you know, revenue side. But we also have a plan mapped out to suggest, you know, if, if it were to go in either direction, these are the things that we would, um, you know, look at, so. Uh, but the recommendation will be to adopt the, what, what, what we're calling the governor's, uh, budget piece. And then what I'm hearing consensus as of right now, to look at that Plan B on the insurance, is that what I'm hearing? Just for, so if that, we just need to know, you know, before next week, if that changes, so just be aware, so.
And one last time, over the last four years, there's been seventeen million dollars worth of reasons that we should ask for at least four million from our counterparts as a peace offering, or as a good faith offering. And then in the future, I think we ought to address that to be getting the accurate revenue sharing piece that should come to the schools. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, meeting adjourned.